Five roll call.
Linda Sosa.
Diane Hook.
Britt Hornsby.
Jennifer Davila.
Anne Leppenin.
Erin Nelson, serving as town manager.
So we have a lot on both agendas, this and the regular, well, the special meeting. So let's go ahead and start with number one, which is review and discussion of the amended fiscal year 2025 budget and the tentative fiscal year 2026 budget. And I'll turn this over to Erin.
Alrighty, so I know we've already spoken about the budget a couple of times. I have some highlights to go over. You all also should have a nice PDF version, so you can go through every number line by line. That budget is also posted on our town website. We have a budget tab, so for those of those in the public who want to follow along, it is on the budget tab. It does say draft, right? Nothing's been approved. That's what we're talking about. The public hearing will be Thursday, May 22 at 9:00 a.m. where we will seek input for both the proposed amended fiscal year 2025 budget, as well as the proposed tentative budget for 2026. I'll try to break this up. I know we've got a lot to go over today, so I'll try to stop for questions. But what I do, what I have here are just the highlights of 2025, and then we'll get into 2026. So for 2025, proposed amended budget is going to increase to about a million dollars. The adopted budget was at $635,000. The increases that we are seeing, I'll kind of get through, but the big thing to note is that again, for a municipal budget, we have to balance that. So revenue in equals expenses out. We do have the ability to move things over in the form of a fund balance. So when I refer to fund balance, for those in the public, that is money that is moving towards fiscal year 2026. In the proposed amended budget, our proposed fund balance has not changed much from the approved budget, and we're looking at about $84,000 rolling over. Of that million dollars, we do have a couple of things in the general fund. They're earmarked as their own separate items. That would include the roads fund. It is nested under our general fund, but we keep the fund separate, so we can allocate Class C road funds only to Class C roads. The roads fund is at $253,901, and that includes a rollover of $198,000 and change into fiscal year 2026. When we get to 2026, you'll see there's also a hefty amount that's moving over to 2027, which is great, because we know roads projects are quite expensive, and so it's good to have that fund balance build up, so we can get the really big projects done. I know on the agenda, we've got some additional things for roads, but when I get down into fiscal year 2026, Michael, feel free to cut in and let me know if you've got any clarifications. The big thing for this one, though, that, you know, almost $200,000 rolling over is because, again, we didn't have any really big projects this year, but there were some big projects planned for this coming year, as well as that Cath Canyon project we're currently allocated. The airport fund, we know that the state is looking at trying to keep those funds kind of in their separate pool as well. And so I've broken those out separately. And we're looking at the hangar, hangar rent as, as the revenue, and then expenses, including the lease, the insurance, as well as some minor things. So you'll see those in their, their own pool, and there's a little bit that rolls over into fiscal year 2026. So for revenues, overall adjusted revenue, as I said, it is adjusting up. That is because of a fairly healthy 335 potential thousand coming out of capital projects. Without those capital project changes, the adjusted revenue is really up only $100,000. And that would be broken down into a little bit extra in tax revenue, not much. But we had some fundraising money come in. We had eight hundred, or excuse me, 8,000 additional dollars in interest from the PTIF account versus budgeted. An extra $4,000 in charges for services, $13,000 in San Juan County matching roads fund money versus zero. There, we had it projected anything for the share, so that 13,000 helps. And then the electrical grant for this community center to replace the lighting is supposed to fall in this fiscal year. Overall tax revenue, I take that back, sorry. So overall tax revenue was down. We're projecting only an $1,800 decrease versus the approved budget. And as I said, it's, it's really that capital projects, the transfer from the capital projects fund that would make up the big change in revenue. So getting into expenses, the things that we can control, we're seeing increased expenses this fiscal year in administration with the building department getting added on, which we did not predict. Interns, which I think are going to be a great addition. The administrative director role, transitioning Malia from kind of more of her like tactical stuff, transitioning both her Bluff Community Center manager role and her project manager role into kind of more of this director role and taking on more stuff. My salary, there was a payroll discrepancy from prior years, so you'll see that jump, but that's what that is. And then legal fees versus the approved budget of $87,000. It looks like we're going to come in right around 92,000 to 93,000. So versus the approved budget, those legal fees are not significantly increased, but there is, you know, it is a chunk of our budget every year. IT and software is an increase of 13,000 versus budget. Again, that just has to go with the transition. We did get some new equipment in. I do think from, you know, a security standpoint, it's always good to be up to date on that. I know there are less expensive options, but from a municipal government perspective, like we just have to take some additional security precautions that we can't get through, through other channels. And we also did have professional services, so instead of putting it under the roads budget, we did the surveying for the roads, which is no big deal, you know, $7,000, but there's that. From a decrease of expenses, parks is definitely coming in under budget. Specifically, the insurance was the savings, the way it was broken out. Roads, big savings that's rolling over into next year. And then administration didn't have a bookkeeper for half the year, didn't have a note taker. But overall, expenses are looking good, which means that that fund balance is still at 84,000 rolling into fiscal year 2026. Just some other considerations is what goes into this budget. Looking at that Cath Canyon road replacement, I have up to $25,000 this year. We'll just kind of see how it falls. Clearly, there's plenty of money in roads to cover that. The portable generator project through USDA is supposed to hit this fiscal year. Of that, Bluff would have a $14,000 match to their $47,000. Malia and I are meeting later this week to talk about if we can get that done before the end of June. And I also have the CCC building in here. Oops, sorry, go back, not quite yet. I'm up to $300,000 potentially coming out of capital projects for that for this fiscal year. Clearly, that's something that we still need to evaluate, but that is baked into this budget, which is also why you're seeing me of that 334,000 or whatever, 300,000 is the CCC. So that's why we're seeing that big increase. We could also potentially talk, I think what I have in the actual budget, if you dig in, moves from capital projects to general, general to special revenue, but I will double check on that. But all in, that's what we're looking at there. And then for capital projects, we also looked at taking some funding for roads, but I think Roads Committee and I can sit down and figure out, you know, maybe we save that for another project and just kind of keep it in the pot, since Michael has done great with managing his budgets. We already talked about some of the grants. Okay, it's a lot for 2025. All in, looking good. Money rolling over into next fiscal year. Clearly, over the course of the next couple of weeks, we'll continue to shore this up. If there were any big surprises coming down the pipes, we would get that in there, so you all could approve it. We do sometimes bake in a little bit of excess, just so you don't have to go and amend your budget again. I would say that the budget that is proposed, the PDF that you got, doesn't really have any of that flex funding. So that may be something on the 22nd that we can talk about if you did want to just have, you know, some extra. And I don't say cushion, as in like, we're going to go and spend it, but if we did have an expense pop up, we wouldn't have to go amend the budget before the end of June. Does that make sense? Okay, but what, what you're seeing is, is my general guess is we'll all spend by the end of June. Okay, moving into 2026. And I know I'm going fast. I'm so sorry. Let me make sure, sorry, let me get some people. I think I've got some people joining us online. Don't want to leave Jacob Nelson in the waiting room. That would be really rude. All right, moving into 2026. And again, I know it's really fast. I just know we've got a lot of things on the agenda. We are taking public comment up through the public hearing on Thursday, the 22nd. So if folks have questions, want to write in, we always welcome that. And then, of course, they can also give comment during that public hearing. And then for you all, definitely stop me. So drafted 2026 budget. Looking at a pretty healthy budget for next year, a lot of this is capital projects, a lot of this is grants. So I would say, you know, our general administrative budget does not change significantly. It is usually, you know, between parks, utilities, our admin and everything, we're looking in the realm of, I'm going to sit that ball here, don't let me do this, but around 350 to 450,000 a year. Clearly, this 1.2, almost 1.3 million is baking in a lot of projects. And so that is adhering to the capital projects that we had talked about in September. And then I know we've got capital projects later on in the agenda, too, so we can talk about what changes and modifications and shifts you want to make this fiscal year 2026 versus in the future. Of that general fund, again, nested in there is the roads department, which for this coming fiscal year is looking at having 312, oh, sorry, 312,000, almost 313,000 dollars. And that would also have an increased fund balance for fiscal year 2027 of 182,000. Again, a really good thing when you've got these really expensive projects that you're building up to. For the airport, there is, we'll talk about airport in just a second. For our general fund, not including the roads department or the airport, we are still seeing an increase in the fund balance. So that definitely, you know, goes to show that, you know, we've got some grants coming in. We've got some capital projects that are covering things here. But ideally, we're still having a fiscally conservative budget that we can kind of save for that rainy day. I do want to, you know, lean into again, that having money in the PTIF fund accruing that interest year over year is definitely a benefit. All right, so for our big revenues, we, I am not calculating in any change in the property tax rate. If you all did want to do that, again, we usually target, we're looking at around $35,000 annually for that. If we wanted to go through the truth and taxation process, we absolutely can. It does change our budget a little bit in terms of when you approve it. But I did not make any of those changes into this budget for this year. So if you want to open that up, we can definitely talk about that. Overall tax revenue collected is estimated to decrease by about 26%, so that would be all taxes. That's a reduction of about $60,000 versus this fiscal year of 2025. I am projecting a 33% decrease in resort tax. That is the biggest category that we collect, so that would be looking at about $80,000 versus this fiscal year of 110 projected. Then a 35% decrease in sales tax, so that's an estimated $55,000 in collection versus our $74,000 this year projected. And that's about 90 or 19,000, and then a 35% decrease in TRT. Those are our biggest categories. Again, you know, we had talked about, you know, the state, the economy, and what we're thinking. It's definitely still time to make adjustments to these projections. But I personally, I feel like this is probably still a good place to start. I don't know if anyone in town, I have not heard anything from like the state level. I haven't heard anything from economic development that things would change drastically in the last couple of weeks, weeks since we've been talking. But I definitely will accept feedback if we want to make any changes to this, our biggest revenue category at this time for next fiscal year.
Is there anybody who's thinking they want to increase property taxes? Because it does require us to do a slightly different process.
I do not.
I do not. No. And Jen's on the phone.
Well, no, I, I just, you know, I, I spoke up last time that I feel like it's important to, maybe we don't need it this year, but I feel like it's important to keep our eye on that, just so if there ever comes a time when we do need to increase them, they're not jumping as a classical valve. That's my thoughts on it. But if we're okay without it, I'm sure I'm fine.
I definitely appreciate the perspective, and I completely agree. The massive percentage increase changes definitely, you know, throw, throw off the public. I would agree that, you know, clearly, we're not seeing a significant deficit in our budget. You know, that, that always, but just this idea of, you know, $35,000 versus, you know, the 200, 300,000 that we're bringing in in revenue, it's not a huge percent of our budget. So if you're doing it just to cover a deficit, it's really not going to fill that gap. But realistically, inflation is always going up. Property is more expensive out here. And so, you know, the amount that we're collecting, the actual property owners would see a decrease in the amount of their individual contributions to the town, but we still collect the same amount. And so that's why the truth and taxation process is a little funky, and it's not always, you know, what we think, oh, we're going to raise property taxes by X amount per person. It's not really how it's done. It's this percentage breakdown. So when we get to truth and taxation potentially next year, there'll probably be some good public education that goes along with that. But yeah, if you guys are okay with it, we'll keep it at, at what we're looking at. Anne and I will have a resolution in June where, where you all will approve that tax rate. And then I do agree that this is a good one that maybe we can talk about earlier in the budgeting process next year to kind of make sure that we're adjusting things appropriately and folks understand.
So was the TRT, the tax that's gone up? Like, is the state?
It's the state and the county that are getting an increase. So we don't see any.
Just the businesses have to collect.
Make sure everybody's talking loud enough so that we get it on the recorder.
Yeah, the businesses will collect more, but it goes to the state and the county. We, the town, won't see that increase.
And then we get some of it filtering back through to different programs and grants. And then what, and the sales taxes split between around the state and whatnot, but we don't, we're not, we did not raise the TRT tax to collect for the town. And we had no say over.
I guess that's my opinion. It's like, okay, well, the state and the county's getting in on it, and they're raising it, you know, so.
We can't, we can't raise our, we were at where we can collect. We will also see probably some increase hopefully in county services is what is supposed to be going to mitigate. And I know that's a tricky subject for us right now, but, you know.
But that's what it's for, is like the EMS and fire and some type of that.
But that's, yeah, I just don't believe that's how it's going to.
Which is an important one to talk about when we do talk to the county and negotiate with the county, though, is Bluff does fill in a significant amount of TRT for the county. And so as the council members who are staying with us, as we continue those conversations with the county, we should have that at the back of our mind as to what Bluff is bringing in.
And I can't remember the exact details, but the sales tax, part of what we get in our sales tax is they pool everything in the state and then split it out per capita. So the more the state makes, the more we get in sales tax. It's not just what we produce in the block.
And additional revenue, and again, please dig into all of the numbers online. I'm hoping, I need each of you to go in before the public hearing and make sure that all was looking right. But increases, again, looking at some good grants. Congratulations to Malia for that playground grant, $165,000. That's really exciting. Especially given that so much of it was in kind versus cash match. We are looking at a $13,000 cash match for that. I do have the cemetery grant in for 20,000. We can talk about, you know, if we see any changes to that, but that's there with some additional 7, 7,500 coming out of capital projects for cemetery, which is actually a decrease versus the $15,000, since we could get some grant money. Are projecting a decrease in Class C roads funds, potentially to 55,000. Really, we're usually around 70. We're thinking that potentially just taxes in general are going to be down. So it's not going to cut in too much, and the hope would be that we actually do make closer to the 70.
Yeah, I think 55 is probably reasonable.
Thank you. I currently have in there as well, $55,000 San Juan Road Matching Fund. That one's really up in the air. I can zero it out if you're more comfortable with that, though, Michael.
I'll find out on June's side.
Perfect. Conservatively, with that in mind, if we do, if you all do plan to pass budgets before then, we might zero it out just to be safe. In the grand scheme of things, clearly, the roads fund has plenty of, you know, working capital for the next fiscal year. Again, decrease in interest if money's taken out of PTIF for capital improvement projects. And we are, again, are rolling over those fund balances from this fiscal year into next fiscal year. Expenses, administrative costs, lots is baked into that, but total looking at just under $300,000. That's staff, that's IT, that's elections. I do have elections already in there for 7,500. It is not the 15,000 that we could be hit with if we go through the county. Also, legal, I have $35,000 in legal fees currently in there, and definitely could take feedback if we want to adjust that number.
Can we talk about it now? I mean, I'm up for an increase in legal in general, just because, I mean.
And again, this fiscal year, we're looking at 92, 93,000, so.
Yeah, I'd rather have a war chest for it than, than be intimidated all the time by. That's, that's our number one thing, being intimidated by what it costs, so.
Is there, so, so historically, prior to the lawsuit and prior to the increased legal attention to the CCC project and Utah to make the CA's partnership, we had been averaging, and again, you know, this was very early on in the incorporation, averaging 20 to 35,000 in legal fees. This year, we're looking at 93,000. What would folks feel comfortable with? And I don't need to necessarily break it out into each of the categories. We can just say administrative legal for the purposes of the budget. What is a dollar amount that you would feel comfortable with allocating?
I'm going to say 60 would be comfortable. And I do want to comment on the historical piece. For the first couple of years, I did a lot of the legal work, but I got to a point where I was out of my league. I mean, land use and all that is not my specialty. I could give you a great divorce, but I couldn't do anything beyond that for a couple of years. So we did increase legal fees so that we would be doing things correctly. And then the litigation was certainly a factor, and the Utah-Dana-Bukah partnership took some, some hits. I think 60 would be the minimum that I'd want to see in there.
I was saying 75, just about.
I was thinking 65. Also, we don't have to spend it. We can roll that over what we don't use, but I.
Right.
I do like having that hammer.
If we didn't, if we didn't make that work in your budget.
Yes, we do have room. Yeah.
Because I don't want to like, I want to know what we're losing if we.
No, we have room. If, we definitely had funds that was going to roll into 2027, and this would not even eat up all of that. You definitely will have a smaller amount. But yeah, you definitely, you definitely have room in next fiscal year.
And then we don't have to amend the budget if we come up with more expenses within there.
Yeah, okay. So tentative lease, 70, 67? 67.5. I will do 67.5. All right. All right. Thank you for that feedback. That's really helpful. Parks and facilities increase over typical, just because so many fun projects are happening. So playground, it's like all will happen in fiscal year 2026 if we for end of June next year, if it's, if it's all in there. Cemetery, BCC, kind of like general maintenance. And then I do still have 15,000 for the fire department, and that was 15,000 this year, 15,000 next year. I should note, too, administratively, Diana Davidson reached out to me, and I can share this information. I know she's on today. But she has proposed the same request of $5,000 for Bob for this coming fiscal year. And that is already baked into the administrative portion of it. So no, no changes there. I will make sure, if I have not already, I'll make sure that's forwarded out to you all. But I think, you know, very reasonable in terms of advertising, which is honestly really helpful to share to get more people to this region. All right, any comments, questions? I will say, I don't have a specific breakdown for the 15,000 for fire. Anthony, or excuse me, Chief Lot has provided that for this fiscal year, and it's all very reasonable and would align with what you all had talked about for approving. Last year, we just know that the fire department, you know, will always have equipment and needs, so if you all are there with that.
I would like to just make a comment about the admin expenses of things that it between you and Malia also giving grants and things is incredible. And then also getting that money moved to PTA, pretty much, I mean, it would be a huge dent in your salary. So I appreciate that. Is that, so we appreciate you keeping on.
Great little cycle. Yeah, absolutely. I would also recommend potentially, it doesn't need to be today, or even, but maybe before the end of the year, that we probably transfer some additional money from the roads checking account to PTF to increase your interest. I think that would be good, and you should have plenty of it, but we'll talk and we'll let you know what my recommendations are.
And I want to, I want to thank Lou for pushing so hard on the PTF when I push back. So thank you.
Well, then it's good that it's in now. I mean.
Yeah, I appreciate it. So the cemetery is going to be a little tricky right now. So I'll be making some calls. I should have a little better idea on eligibility for the grant in, you know, the next couple of days. So that piece might move a little bit.
So, all right, I think this is my last, two more slides, all the time. So roads department. Michael and I got together, very reasonable requests for next fiscal year. Michael, do you mind if I just go through?
There's one correction there.
Please.
And maintenance, instead of chip ceiling, they should say crack ceiling.
Crack ceiling, thank you. I will get that same, and I'll upload this to the website. Thank you. So roads expenses would be at $130,000. Pretty much in line with what we were looking at this year, just moving over, and then 182 moving to fiscal year 2026. Additional items that Michael and I went through would be the Cath Canyon repair in Seventh West as planned. 4,500 for signage. And then getting a road base onto Second East. Be very exciting. And then chip ceiling. Chip ceiling, crack ceiling, chip ceiling.
But the street base.
Yes, so that's. Over by the post office. So, and then also, we have 13,500 baked in for a long term, long range plan. A pavement management plan to really help, you know, with Michael sunsetting out of our department. It'll be really helpful to have the engineering, you know, plan so we can focus on, on what's needed. Airport, as I talked about, those expenses, insurance and rent, a little bit other. All right, capital projects. Again, we'll kind of get into this maybe a little bit later. Fiscal year 2026, I think I left out my, my total up there. The big one would be roads, which again, we can talk about if we want to decrease that amount moving over or reallocate it for a different project. We still have the solar installation project. We had $100,000 for CCC. We can talk about if you want to keep it in there. Painting this building for a very reasonable 4,500. The ADA accessibility project that we didn't get to this year, and then that cemetery project. So probably, I'll wrap this up, and then if we want to dig into any of those later on the agenda, I know we were talking about capital projects. So that's what I'm going to find at the end of the day. There's no EPA grant. We're trying to salvage the other grants. We're going to work with the architects to figure out realistically what money we can spend in fiscal year 2026. There are numbers in there just because we have the fund open. But if you have any specific feedback or requests or questions, let me know.
I do think it was really fortunate that you couldn't do a drawdown on the EPA grant. So we got a notice saying, if you remember, when they terminated the grant, they said, go ahead and draw down. And Aaron attempted and couldn't draw down. And now we have a notice that says, oh, oops, the administration and EPA are taking a drawdown as a consent to the termination of your grant. Yeah, so it was not a lot of money. It wouldn't have saved us on anything, on any front of an EPA grant, but thank goodness we couldn't do it, because at least now, if the Supreme Court does what it should be doing at some point and reinstates those grants that were approved and contractually obligated on, we won't have consented on another fantasy of this administration. So so, yeah, so it worked out to our benefit to not be able to draw down.
In that period.
And yeah, in that period of time.
To specify, I had, I had done drawdowns earlier before we got the termination notice, but.
Yeah, those were okay. It was, I mean, how anybody interprets it contractually that way, I have no idea, but that's where we're at right now. So.
Contract don't matter anymore.
Yep. Okay, so questions for Erin? Thoughts on the budget?
I'm big issue for legal things, so thanks. I'll make a shift to legal things, so thanks.
I'll get that adjusted, I'll get the total dollars, um, updated. And then, yeah, if there are any other big things, um, in the next week or so, we can get that added. But realistically, I think between this year and next year, we're, we're in pretty, pretty solid shapes.
So, I don't have my notes in front of me, so if I misspeak here, Aaron, grab it. Um, so the idea is with the public hearing, we should be pretty solid on our numbers at that point, and unless something really pops up, the goal that we have is to get the budgets approved so we can move on to other things this year, just to go here.
Um, I tentatively approved the twenty-second in the field at nine o'clock. It's found out yesterday that that's when my son is graduating, so I'm asking for it. So that they're doing it in the morning, usually, instead of the evening, which is what I was assuming was happening, but now they're doing it at nine o'clock.
So Santiago, they're gonna have to postpone it, they.
You just turn your phone on. Um, and it won't be very long though, right?
It, it never is, most, mostly the public doesn't show up and, you know, is the one or, there's one or two people who do look at the budget and sometimes they jump on, but.
No, that's fine, but it's, it's, I think we can excuse Jen, she can study it and.
Yeah, I'll look at it and.
You can hear, you can listen to the recording, yeah, yeah.
And, you know, if you see something in between now and then, just send in a written comment, and then we can take that into consideration. So you want to go to his graduation.
So the second, the twenty-second is the hearing and the special meeting to approve it afterwards?
Yes.
Because we have it all set and.
Yes.
I thought it would be okay for that, so I opened up.
That's okay.
Yesterday, and it's like, oh, thanks for letting us know.
We do a rental that starts here in the noon in that day, so it has to be done by noon.
Oh, real fast, we will, we will be done well before that. It, that, that's one public hearing that does move always very quickly.
And I think I'll let you and Aaron know, I'll be traveling for work, but I shouldn't be available, but I'll have to attend personally.
Okay, sounds, sounds like a plan. And again, same thing, if you see something, send it in writing so we've got it. All right, if we're done with the budgets, we'll move to overview and discussion of the work proposed on the Old Block Highway, and I'm going to turn this over to Michael. I'm gonna ask Michael that you pull your chair up, and then if you can just pass this down, thank you.
Yeah, so, I think we've discussed this a number of times, right? And, uh, so I just want to know how the council, if the council wants to move forward with this project. The engineers have inquired whether, you know, if there's interest or not.
But you had an update, um, that you sent out, that putting a, a catch sidewalk back into the plan.
Well, not a sidewalk, what, what would happen is, uh, um, the roadway would be expanded by about six feet to pave the portion to accommodate pedestrian and cyclists. It would be delineated painting or some way to delineate it, and, uh, so, uh, that's what it stands right now, one million forty-one thousand dollars, probably a little more.
So that would essentially be like, um, like a bike lane, for sure.
Yeah, like a bike lane, but the desert. A shared lane.
So, so if it widened in six feet, like, so it'd be like three feet off each side? Is that the other? So six feet into right, all right, like which side, it seems like it cuts through parking lots and.
I think the only place that it'll be a problem is, is up by my, well, and.
Yeah, by you.
Up by me is the only place that it would bother that into a problem, because everywhere else has.
And I think the, you know, going over, uh, Cap Canyon, the thought I had is there we could do, uh, you know, a narrower lane, uh, with, uh, flexible, the one here, you know? And, uh, because I don't see a pedestrian break money wise, you know? So for this, this particular portion.
So I put a lot of, I did this, you know, and talked about, um, we have an active transportation committee. And we're ready to meet, again, we've been in since, what, twenty-four, quite a few years in planning, um, the active transportation piece of law and the, the strategic planning. Uh, and I don't even remember if you were there for Rose and things, we had like thirty or forty people in here, um, in a structured strategic planning portion, and, uh, but what I'm what we've learned is that paint, what their big thing is, is they say paint does not protect. So that won't fly in the, the grants and things either, like if you try to do federal, so it, it all starts with the ADA. So think about, we've got a perfect example of Lys and Elliott, you're pushing a wheelchair along, and you can't have too much slope, it has to have enough width, um, that kind of thing. So if it was a separate piece, then they can keep, I don't know what the percentage is, but you can't slope it. So of course, you know, you're not gonna like the banking, but there's a certain slope that they have to adhere to. So if the whole road had to beat that, it would get pretty complicated. If it was a separate little piece, then we can build that up and pack that in, and, uh, and there, there's money for bridges and that kind of thing. And so what I would propose is that since we have an active transportation committee that's been studying this for quite a few years, that we, um, meet ourselves and look at ideas there and then talk with the engineer to give ideas of like, okay, what about this? Because the road there is ninety-nine feet wide, right? Um, and then where it pinches down over the wash or over the storm drainage, it's still ninety-nine feet, but the road is probably narrower there because of that storm drainage. But I think that, that that group, uh, um, you know, active transportation people could, could, um, give some input into Jones and DeMille and come up with something that the town could look at and and approve that would meet all of these requirements of ADA and and make wise use of it, yeah, I'm picturing the road being narrower and maybe on one side, since we've got to tear it all out. That was what they were talking about, is churning it all up and, and then putting it back on. So we can have some flexibility of moving it around and.
Yeah, my focus is on the road infrastructure, but nothing to do with active transportation. This, doing a separate, we talked about this, doing a separate, the engineers have, have given input on it. Doing a separate pathway, that's fine, but it's not, it's not part of this resurfacing of of the old highway, so I just want to be clear about that. So if you want to do, I'm, you know, you, you suggested a widening, and I took it up, I, I felt I wanted to find a compromise.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you doing that, and I think in, in that general line, what they do in Flagstaff to delineate their bike lane as opposed to their regular road is they have, I don't even know what to call them, but they're, they're more like a, it's, it's like they run a strip of curb almost, I mean, they're plastic, they're, they've got, got a flat top of their trapezoid shape. And they just run it on the side of the bike lane, and I will tell you what, it is not a pretty thing to hit that thing. Francisco hit it in克里斯 and destroyed two of her car tires, and it's a serious deterrent to keep people from just, you know, straying into the bike lane. So I, I have to wonder if that wouldn't be a cheaper alternative to get a, get around just a stripe. People will still feel, feel protected when they're, when they're riding or walking in that extra lane. Um, but it wouldn't cost as much money, and, and it is, it is a physical, it is a physical deterrent. You know, but, but that's just, that's just another option.
Yeah, I mean, you know, when, if, if the project goes forward and you get into the design phase, that's the time we can discuss things like that. Um, you know, right now, it, it's really, you know, you know, I've been working on this, uh, since November twenty-twenty-one. So, you know, I would like to know one way or the other, and I have no hard feelings if you guys don't want to go along with it. Yeah, I'm fine with that.
So Michael.
I like to know one way or the other, if, if it's viable.
Well, we have it in our strategic plan, we have it in our capital projects plans, to plan that old highway. That, that's been on long before twenty-twenty-one, that's been going quite some time. In February twenty-eighteen, we were talking about it then, and before then, we were talking about it. So it's definitely on the project list for everybody in town. And so what, so planning it and getting it set is, I think everybody is on board. I shouldn't, I think everybody is, to make that a smoother road and to make it safer for pedestrians and bicycles, and they're ninety-nine feet wide. So we could just use a part of the road and leave the rest for parking or, you know, have parking only on one side. But it, but it needs to be, Jones and DeMille need to have that information in their plan, so they can make something that that works, and they might be able to narrow down the width of the road to where it's cheaper and they can put that over, but we don't have the money to pay for it, because like you say, the roads money probably won't pay for the bike. And, you know, like in the, out of the roads.
Well, it's, yeah, it, 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 it's gonna be part of the road resurfaces, what I propose.
So, so then we've got enough roads, money built up, that if we can get grants or whatever, because we don't have a million, we don't have a million to spend on it. So what we're trying to make is a good plan and then get money for it after we have a good.
We're at a point where this project, what the engineer presented the last time, is ready to go forward for funding source, that's where it's at. So when you say we don't have the money, no, we don't have to, but we're gonna try to raise it, and I'm gonna participate in it. But I need to know from the town council, do we go ahead or we don't go ahead with this, what we have on the table right now?
I mean, I'm for going ahead with, uh, widening or doing something with the bike lane that way. I feel like if you want to add a whole nother separate bike path, you can separate it, but that's just another project that we could do later, but I think this gets, gets a protective path. I mean, I personally don't like my bike path there, because I walk my kids on the street all the time, it's never been even remotely close to an issue. So I'm a bit confused on the need for it there as opposed to the highway, it seems like a definite need. Um, so, I mean, I'm, I'm moving forward just so we can get this done, and so you start raising.
And with the active transportation, that what you try not to do is make it faster and smoother, which hopefully they'll do the, you know, some roundabout through bumps and narrowing, a lot of it can narrow down. Um, so it's, it's part of our, our bigger plan. And so it seems, I mean, not to use a trite thing, but the cart before the horse, we're gonna whip the pavement in and then try to figure out how we're gonna plan the rest, and that, once it's in, it's in, and it's, it's done. We're not gonna tear it out again, because it will cost a million bucks, but it could be that we want the whole road shifted to one side and parking on the other. That, the, the capital funds, the capital projects, one of them is planning. And our general plan and our strategic plan say we're gonna plan it. It's, we're not just gonna stick more pavement on what's already there, we want it to make a plan, which I think we can do, I don't know if you would all trust the active transportation committee to be that planner, but the planning could be done and then brought back to, for approval and, uh, and then get it right back to them, and they could whip it out. And it, it's not gonna take years to get that, that plan figured out.
Okay, so what Michael is asking for is a vote to be able to move forward. And we don't have a vote on for today. So I will add it to the agenda for next week for a vote, everybody, think about what you want to do. Lou, if you need to meet with active transportation and get some feedback from them, maybe that week will give you that time. But it'll be on for a vote, and we just will deal with it then.
And I really like what I've heard from Jones and DeMille so far, I mean, they've been, been great in their ideas and and as far as hazard, I definitely worry the hazard of people walking, whatever. If you're, as you, a lot of people drive to the bank that's there, they go through, there's, there's motels, there's tourists going through there, there's restaurants on the other end. Uh, it, it can be pretty scary, especially on those, those curves, um.
So why, let me just interrupt for a second, I'm just looking at the time.
Okay.
And we've still got a lot on the work session, so, and, yeah, and you can always meet with Michael separately, talk to him. Michael, thank you. So we're going to move to number three, which is kind of tied to this topic, a discussion of membership on Block Road Committee. When I put this on here over the last couple of days, I started thinking this is probably something we should just lump into one category of discussion of committees, because we've got the playground committee that's now going to have to be very active. If we move forward on a cemetery, we're going to have to do something with the cemetery. And maybe this is the big picture discussion of how many committees do we have? Do we have bylaws for everything? Do we have the number of people set for everything? Rather than piecemealing it and, and belaboring roads today. But get this on the next work session, you know, which would be in June, what is, what do people think?
That sounds like a good idea.
And decide numbers on committees and, you know, that sort of.
Yep, look at what we've got, what we want to increase it to, decrease it to, something, you know.
Okay, I would like to also build into the discussion, like how each of the committees work with administration, and that probably goes into bylaws and like how they work in terms of like budgets and all of that. Um, but now that we have like a more robust administrative arm, I want to make sure, I mean, clearly we need committees, we need people to step up and volunteer. Um, but like what their expectations are, their hourly expectations are, what gets pushed back to admin and things like that would be helpful.
Help that committee who, who comes in.
Yeah, it would be very helpful to understand like delineated responsibilities for the committees versus what's gonna kick back.
The responsibilities for the committees and responsibilities of the staff to help the committees supervise us.
Well, not just the committees' responsibilities, that the council members have to be on the committees, because that is really crucial, that there be a council member assigned to each committee.
It's just good to know which committees are officially out there, several.
Exactly.
Members or whatever, we can make sure that we are covering.
So the the next work session would be June ninth, the next planned work session, hopefully we don't need anything else, but let's move that one to June ninth.
And I have to take a look, maybe it's way, how are you doing?
So then, moving to number four, review and discussion of recent award of funds for the Block Playground, the need to create bylaws and oversight for Playground Committee, and then some, with the exception of talking about the recent award and contract that's out there, all of that would fall, I think, the bylaws, the committee and all that will fall into moving it to that work session, if everyone's okay with that. So, the state of Utah, Division of Outdoor Recreation sent the grant for the, uh, Phase One of the Block Community Center Playground. And I read it and then could not print it, and I need to, I'll sign it electronically when we approve it. But I, I tried to send it out to everyone about an hour ago or two hours ago. It's pretty standard state of Utah. Um, language, it's boilerplate, the only thing in here that I'll draw attention to is in March of twenty-twenty-five, this contract, these things were amended, and I don't recall ever seeing this before, anti-boycott actions. The grantee certifies that it is not currently engaged in any economic boycott, nor a boycott of the state of Israel. So I will go through this, and since we can't vote on it, I will just let them know that we'll be voting next Tuesday, or maybe Malia can let them know that we'll have it on the agenda. There's nothing here that's unusual, it's very typical of the state contracts, other than that one provision that I found interesting, yes. And then the, the other thing was, it looks like the contract is good through September thirtieth of twenty-twenty-seven. So a couple of years to complete everything. Okay, good.
Yeah, I gave us, um, I tried, and in my timeline, I gave us a year to complete it, and that gives us an extra year of work, so.
It's like you worked on.
Yeah.
Well, that's the, yeah, getting it done is perfect. Well, that's the, yeah, getting it done is perfect.
Yeah. So I will get it on there for a vote, but that was the only thing I saw that was unusual.
I don't know that I've seen it.
No, you probably haven't, because I, I just got it. Then I couldn't print it to scan it. And then I didn't know if it would go out as a link that, that people could actually get into it. Sometimes they won't let you forward the attachment, but I tried. But if everybody can just take a look at it. The number five, a discussion of invasive species, weeds, and spraying by San Juan County. I think Lou probably has a better idea of what the county might be thinking.
Yeah, I just, just on today, they just were starting up coming around and seeing what was going on. And they're very willing to help with areas, uh, they sit for us to brainstorm, uh, you know, what we need them to work on, and they're happy to help us. So I thought that was great. I, I did mention the Tree of the Paradise problem that we've got. And that would be a different chemical, different project, and I'm not sure that, I think they'll research a little bit and see what, I think we're probably the only town in the county that's got that going now, in the state, and blinding. Um, but anyway.
Yeah, it's very discouraging to see all the work that that team did, and then they're all just.
And while they come, they sprout right back out. And so what you, and what I've learned about it is that the plant, when we spray it, will tap off the root and not let that poison get to the host tree and whatnot. So it can be a real problem, so the sooner we get on it, the less work it will be to, to get rid of them. And they've done a big chunk. But whenever you spell wide ones there, they're gonna pop up there, which helps. But, but the other weeds, of course, are the, the knappweed and, uh, um, the goadheads and stuff. The goadheads aren't growing yet, but they, I know people don't like the spray so much. But one advantage of it is you can spray them, it seems, um, watching them for a few years, that you can spray them once they've gone to seed, and the seeds are not productive. So that's the, a perk of spraying. Otherwise, you just spray them, and all seeds are still there, and, and they still get trapped around, and black tires, and the rest, but. Anyway, but San Juan County was definitely one.
So I know it was Don Andrews. Was, was there anybody else with them?
Yeah, uh, another worker that's been with, we're, I'm not sure her name, but.
Is the head of that department, Monty?
No, it's, um, Frank, Frank.
Frank.
Smith.
Thanks. I was trying to think of his name last week, and I could not come up with that. So we could just identify some areas and some problems?
See, and like the community center, or the, uh, the old school, uh, that yard, it, I, I told him that he got the, the roller thing, and they didn't know anything about those rollers. And I told him I've watched it on YouTube, whatever, but I've never used one. And it'll pick up a bunch, but you still have a lot of seeds, and as soon as you can't get any, it's like that head's been attacking all the goadheads in town. And he tried to get in there. That's where he wanted to key it, and couldn't get in, because he couldn't see him in there. So as soon as you let one go, you just got a problem. But it could be that getting as many seed up as possible, and then letting them spray it there, it'd be to get rid of the rest. That might be a targeted spot, and that is a mess. And if people are going in there, then they track them out all over town.
The, the other place that really is getting a lot of visitation with cars and bikes and pedestrians is, is really on Eight West, the dead end into the public land. And there are a lot of invasive things out there, and that might be one problem area to catch.
Can they, I, you mentioned that after we had the floods a couple of years ago, so many culverts and every, I mean, I don't, I don't know. It seems like those are invasive. Maybe they're not invasive. I don't, I don't know. But is there, is there anything that they could? They spray those, like on the, the trails.
I know that, that the, the retention, detention ditch behind us is just full of them, as is the pond up there, as is the wash on the other side of the pond. I don't know if they could do anything about.
That would be, that's actually a really great idea, because.
The wash as well is full of them.
Yeah, so, so that storm drainage retention pond, we get it, you get everything growing there, then you get a flood, and then where does it go?
Well, it also.
Goes right down on everybody else's property.
It also backs up the culverts and, and makes it ineffective. Um, so, I don't know. I, I, I wondered if maybe we could burn it out, or, you know, you know, I mean, I don't, I don't know.
But that is a good, a good place to keep them from going down the river, and that's the thing. I, I worry, I don't know what, like this Tree of the Paradise, it gets washed down the river. I don't know if it would take over on the, I don't know, it wouldn't get started on.
But if it hasn't, I mean, I mean, I, I don't know.
It's growing here, though.
No.
And that white, the storm drainage goes right past all of those. There's still some growing right in the ditch.
So, have they started a Mexican hat yet? Because they, they told me they would be starting a Mexican hat and working their way up, or are they already up here?
They just came, today was kind of their first day. They were just popping through and checking on things, and so.
So, let's try to put together a list between now and next week, so we can vote on a list and send it to them.
Well, that whole storm drainage system would be really nice to get the, 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 the County Country Discovery Group. They, they got flooded a few out of that ditch, uh, but that would be where you can keep that clear, to even get the rest that's in there.
I mean, so if we want the water to move through the way the water's supposed to move through in order to avoid flooding, we need to, we need to keep that, that area clean out.
Like the long old school down, it's, it's, that's where they cleared the pond out.
Yeah, yeah.
They might be able to help us with that. That would be a, kind of a pointed target for there, but anyway, yeah.
Why don't we go ahead and everybody think about what they want? Let's bring it back, so we can vote on it next week, and then get something to the county officially, and see if there's a, a charger. Are they covering everything with their grants? I know that they've got, I looked at their minutes from a couple of weeks ago, and they've got some pretty good grants.
And they, the grants are like the red parian, and that's why, like, these, these washes that hit the river and hit the red parian, they go, what's it, it's a lot of it right up there.
All right, then moving to number six, a discussion of the United States Department of Transportation requirements on use of federal financial assistance. This came through from Chris Patter. It came through the Department of Transportation. It came from the U.S. Department of Transportation. The Secretary Sean Duffy. It applies to anyone, any entity, any person using the U.S. DOT financial assistance, irrespective of whether it's cities, states, or their entity types. And I just wanted to be sure everyone was aware of it.
That's the one you sent us a couple of weeks.
Yeah, yeah. And it specifically prohibits anything referring to D E I as a federal law violation.
We don't carry any federal funds for the roads.
Well, you're talking about the, the federal funds that filter to the states, that filter to the counties, that filter to us, and this is going to apply to everybody.
I see roads come from taxes on gasoline.
Yeah, and I think I might agree with Michael, because, um.
I, I, I'm just pointing out that this is out there.
Yeah, and we need to be careful of all that. And it talked a lot about discrimination, anti-discrimination, stuff like, um, all the reasons people can discriminate against other people. Don't do it. Don't mess it up. And what I read into that is like, you're getting this grant, don't mess it up by doing something stupid like that.
Yeah, but be careful.
Yeah, I see what it's concerned, uh, taxes on gasoline and excise tax on trucking.
Yes. And so what do we do when the Active Transportation Committee gets a grant, and it's federal? That's why I'm raising it. We have federal funds. We are touching federal funds. We all need to think federal. If it's coming from the feds, and it's going to the state, it's going to the counties, it's going to local entities, this is, this, this is like, we, it all has to be on our radar. That, yeah, the class C funds, but man, on the Active Transportation, anything that we're signing off on, um, it's just like with all the contracts that have the state and federal contracts that say, if you're using contractors, they need to be licensed, they need to have this, they need to comply with certain standards. You know, and it's, it's really easy for me to forget that we've got so much in a twenty-page contract. But this is one that I think could catch you up in a really weird way, so.
So that, that's the one that I, I mentioned, uh, to me is a really good indicator that the grant that was a yes, that has not been told but no yet, to do the, the design and planning of the highway trail from Bluff to Montezuma Creek, Bluff to Montezuma Valley, and Bluff to Blough, it's how they describe it. It's not just me, it's, they use Bluff as the start to those. Uh, they have not been told no. And then this came out that said, you're getting funds, don't mess it up. So I'm, I'm kind of thinking that this was, um, an indication that we're touching it. It's not to us, but like you say, we're.
It's trickling down, so we just need to be really careful.
There, there, and this isn't about, um, anti-discrimination. This is about finding ways to steal money back. It's all this stuff is in it, and not just true funds. Like, it's got very little to do with that in D E I language, because they'll go in and they'll look for stuff. I mean, so don't focus even too much on the ADA stuff. Don't focus too much on, don't mention across the river at all.
And ours, we, we've done our part of helping to secure the grant, but it's a, it's a U dot grant, and U dot, U dot.
I'm not talking about that one specifically. I'm saying, what she's saying with this language, this is what everybody that is dealing with grants is doing, is you have to go through and not just find diversity and pull that out. Anything that can, they will look and see if there's anything that they can retrieve this diversity and throw it out. So, oh, we're having, we're doing this for cross, for people across the river. That might be enough to send it out, like they're, they're trying to seize funds. And there would be no excuse to do it.
I was trying to throw a little positive in there.
Positive about the administration.
But I think this one might have, have, um, hold on. It was one that we got a yes. Another one we got a yes, and we ended up with a no temporarily, hopefully. This one has never gotten a no, and it's, uh, looks like it may have survived.
Well, I think that the one area that immediately pops up in my mind is how we put out things for bid and say, uh, women-owned businesses and minorities encouraged to apply. Yeah.
Well, that's hard, because like, that's a federal requirement that that's in there. So it's like, really a catch twenty-two, and we probably will need specific, especially like C D E G, any of those where, like, those are the requirements that we had a hard time, you know, it's, it's gonna be a lot.
Yeah. Well, hopefully, we'll get some direction from somewhere. Um, moving to number seven, a discussion of the status of Bluff Cemetery. I'll just make this really short, um, since we were all present. And we've had a pretty good turnout. There are some areas that are really interesting. This was the first time in all of my discussions with the county where certain pieces did start to fit together. And the one that really fit together was that where the current burials are is outside the special service district. The county has tried to appoint boards to regulate all of, pretty much everything. Um, this is the first time that it's been said in a public meeting that I'm aware that the county acknowledged they did not complete the process of a special service district by getting a certificate approving the special service district for a cemetery in Bluff through the Lieutenant Governor. And so I've got to make some calls and, and do some further discussion, so stay tuned. I like the idea of a small committee talking about what to do, but I also want some clarification, because it's like incorporation. If we didn't complete the certificate process for incorporation, or we didn't do the dissolution certificate process for the B S A, then after a certain period of time, that vote is negated. It's done. There is no incorporation, there is no dissolution, there is no creation of a special service district. If that is, and, and I went back and pulled my notes from twenty twenty-two conversations with Mac McDonald, after his conversation with the Lieutenant Governor's Office, who declined in twenty twenty-two to issue that retroactively. So my question is, is there a valid special service district at all that anybody needs to be concerned with, which would leave Hole in the Rock Foundation to do what they do, and us to talk about what we want to do with the current land? So stay tuned. I'm still investigating.
And I think it falls into the committee thing. If, in June ninth, there's a ways off, but maybe not. Uh, because I think there needs to be a cemetery committee also, and I think, I think it would be really helpful if we could have like three from the at-large county, you know, the families that are represented, three from Hole in the Rock or the fort here, and three from town, to kind of see if we could pull it all together as one big cemetery. Otherwise, we're gonna go up, and somebody's gonna have a fence here, and a fence, you know, and it'll be really awkward, uh, if we have three separate, and if it's, but.
Well, in, in my mind, if my thinking is correct, and there is no special service district created, then you've got, every entity has to go back to the drawing board on their own and figure out what they want to do. But let's get that question answered first, and then come back to it. So on the works.
Could you just clarify for me? Because under the assumption that we did have a special service district, did the county just lack, you know, I mean, because I, I was surprised, maybe I shouldn't have been, because I guess, I don't know why I was surprised. I was surprised at the number of people who showed up for that meeting yesterday. And, you know, to me, it's all, well, we didn't know, we didn't know, we didn't know. It's always, we didn't know, we didn't know, we didn't know, you know, I mean, so. If, did the county actually try to seek people to sit on this special service district? Did they, you know, I, I mean, it, I just.
So, so what, what happened in twenty oh-one or two, when it was formed, allegedly, it formed? Robin Bond, Betty Gaines, and Bill Davis were appointed, and then their terms expired, and nothing happened. Five years ago, I think it was, Mac decided he was going to advertise for all the boards, because they were all kind of a mess on the special service district, and he included Bluff in that, the Bluff Cemetery District. And then he had conversations with me and the Lieutenant Governor's Office, and decided that he wasn't sure that he could actually appoint a board, so then they pulled that off. And they did that twice and pulled it off. And I think that that's why, when I talked to the Lieutenant Governor's Office in twenty twenty-two, what I was told was, if that service district wasn't formulated and completed, and the town incorporated, then that was kind of a done deal. The county can't come in and just establish a special service district as a county in a town. But again, it's been four years since I've thought about it, three and a half, so, since I've thought about that part. So we'll just have to get more.
Like I said, when it was out, I sent Mac an email saying I wanted to be on it. He said, hang tight, and then never got back.
I was just curious. I, I don't disagree that we should have members from the county on the board, because obviously, yes, their families are up there, but I don't think, I, I don't particularly like the number of three, three, and three, because I feel like that could very easily, um, overwhelm the people who actually live in this community's vote, so.
Well, yeah, and it's, it, it, the idea there, get all of the entities to be able to work together, because as people move out of this water.
I, I agree with that. I agree that we should have members of all of them, but not, not that we, we as a community get outburdened all the time.
I think what I was thinking is that the, that group of nine could come up with a plan, and then the town one would be the managing group to manage it, but you would have the board be these nine people that would be on your board, or, you know, however that would work. But otherwise, I don't think we're gonna get, I, I just, I could see it being three separate pieces. The county has their whole piece, and the, the county piece that is their service area is not where the grates are, that are the new grates.
Right.
Um, which I didn't understand.
Yeah. So, I mean, the question in my mind is, is there a special service district even work under, number one? Number two, what, what does that do for the, where we're, where the town burials have been taking place? And I personally, just my personal opinion is if there is no special service district, I think the town should have a discussion about creating its own cemetery and managing it. Hole in the Rocks already has their setup and the county has their little piece. But I'm just one person, so let's get all the information so we can make some informed.
Not maybe the only way that everybody can agree is to not agree. But it would be really nice if you could have a Bluff cemetery that they have one voice that, you know, one, one person to go through to find out who.
It would have been, yeah. So let's get back to that one. I'll get more information.
Is that, uh, can we add it to the work session so we can talk about it as being a, a committee on either, on how?
If I, yeah, if I have the information, so I know whether there's a special service district, you know, we can do that. I mean, we're gonna talk about all the committees. Is there any other, other before we take a move into the, uh, special meeting? No other, so it is. 5:13, we need to adjourn this and come back into the special meeting.
Yeah, motion to adjourn, come back into special meeting.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Okay, I'm turning.
They're not all the stuff.
Okay, I've turned off this recorder. Does anybody need a second here? Okay, let's just take a second, but we'll just keep Craig on and I've just got the recorder on.
All righty, I am going to temporarily mute us for those online. And we are ready for public comment, so you can put your name in the chat box or raise your hand and we'll be back in just a second.